I've been in there for pretty close twenty years. Yeah, it was pretty close twenty years.
You think everyone else knows that for a while.
Oh yeah, oh yeah.
Like you said, electrical.
Yeah. And when you were saying PTO, I got thinking I had to deal with that one. And the PTO runs through all the safety circuits. And I had one one time and it was the hardest because the arm switches.
Yeah.
And you can't already get to those without tearing the whole damn thing apart. Oh my goodness.
The one thing I gotta remind Jerry about all the time is I don't know how it happens or why he does it, but if you have that, if you don't have the depth all the way down.
You get a power hole?
Yeah.
Uh huh, yep.
If you don't have that all the way down, nothing works.
Nope.
There's a little button band around your foot, make sure.
Yep. Yep.
Alright, I just wanted to update you on her.
Been there done that too.
And me too. That's how I figured it out.
Morning.
Morning. Starting good.
Morning, guys.
Morning, good.
Good morning.
Not good. Have a good weekend?
Have a good one.
Busy. I think it's Saturday. You know, it kinda looks familiar, but aren't things anything we've ever done?
What they're saying is if we don't put in the, uh, if we do, it's a screen over there. It gives us seventy-five percent of what happened. We need to figure out what happened.
So she in the hospital?
No, not yet. I'm trying to stop setting up the service.
You're still trying.
Hey, Justin.
Good morning.
How are you doing?
Good, Mark.
The kids is going to have a ride on Friday, the weekend of the weekend.
And yes, I figured I'll just send this last year and present the event story from up here. Dan and I did it. Do you wanna do it too? What's that? Yeah. Okay. Okay. I don't think it was the other one from the roll out. So Keith, you wanna present the event stories from the front guy to roll out? Okay, so let's take care of that.
Did they do the thing?
I got my own email. I'll get it.
I'm not sure.
I have it too.
Will we come in right up?
Yeah. Hi, Al.
Hey, Al.
Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah. Well, last thing you want to add is that I'm gonna pull from the right and have them add. They're terrible. Um, I have a net condition. I'm worried. Maybe it's because I'm just speaking. So, I'm not a town.
Right, right, yeah.
Uh, yeah. I'm gonna go talk to you now. But you know, if you're having a hard time, I'll probably help. Well, you're a prom. Too bad.
Even maybe it's colder worse scenario, but at least in there. Size of the lady's hair.
Well, you know, most of my photos are like.
Right, can't be much of a.
What are you gonna do?
Right.
I wouldn't know how many people are out there.
Yeah.
Only like two or three are on that.
Yeah. I thought that was really good how they changed the drop off of the heritage centers. They had a longer ways to walk and people could kinda filter in along. Instead of getting out to the steps and run the building.
And that's where you can go with the same bar or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, that was good.
Alright, nine o'clock. Call me in order with the, I'm just waiting, I'll be right back.
Oh, fly text.
It's almost true.
We used to fly over there last week, so we gotta move it back. We are, yeah. I think we need one in each room.
Not less.
I think treasure room, yeah.
Is that right? That could be.
Yeah, because I really need the furniture down here. It was sent to K2, which is more than six stairs. And I knew K6 was yours, but I didn't know it was yours.
And this is the reason we're gonna talk about getting flagged in the world hall. Alright, same as we have you flying now. Call me and order a pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Justin, you wanna come on up?
Luke, what do you think?
So, my name is Justin Luke and today I represent the Holton Ball Association. Appreciate the time and I know it's been several years since the ball association has come and asked for any assistance or funding, but I know it also has been something that was done in the past and so we appreciate they continue to, you know, support in that regard. Um, so today, we're in the process of doing a huge remodel and building a brand new field over at Raptors Park by the city swimming pool. And in help trying to push that project across the finish line. We wanted to come this year and respectfully request some funding assistance. And specifically, what we're looking at is a scoreboard, a new scoreboard over there. There's actually never been a scoreboard at that park. One little field is the tee ball field, the older one is kinda the coach pitch and machine pitch. There's never been a scoreboard over there. Um, and a new scoreboard for that field runs about fifty-five hundred dollars. That's, I guess, more specifically our ask and request for this year. Um, and it's, and that'll be one of the final pieces, you know, to help kinda get that part, you know, the way we want it in the new field. This will be on the new field, which was the former tee ball field. Um, that has all the new concrete that's being made into a bigger field that could be used for a lot more than just tee ball. Um, just a quick update on the ball association here in the last year. We put in the new batting cages that are covered and then have turf over at the Johnsonville Field, uh, which has been a great asset, I think, to have a turf and a covered area where, you know, teams and individuals can work and utilize that. Um, so this is kind of our next big project. We're averaging about twenty to twenty-five teams per year, the Holton Ball Association is. And that's about two hundred, uh, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy-five kids or something like that is our current average. The majority of those are younger kids that are tee ball and machine pitch. The older groups seem to kinda die down a little bit over the last few years because they're doing more travel ball. Um, and, you know, the other plan that we have when we get these two new fields done is that we would be able to host tournaments. That's something that we've never really done, more than maybe just two or three teams in town. But just like basketball, just like wrestling, these tournaments are a really big thing right now. And once we get this new field done and, uh, the renovation of the Raptors field that's there, we'll technically have four fields in town that we can use, which would be enough to be able to host a tournament and bring in a lot more people from, you know, outside the community. So that's kind of our end goal and what we're looking at, to be able to have four fields that are all regulation size that we could use to have a softball or a baseball type of tournament. Um, my final ask today, I guess, besides the fifty-five hundred to be considered for this year to purchase the new scoreboard for the field, um, is that, um, if we can possibly be included as kind of a line item in the future, uh, like a twenty-five hundred dollar number, I understand that's maybe something that's been kind of, um, in the ballpark, if you will, no pun intended, with some of the other ball associations and groups or whatever. So, um, I'm happy to come and provide updates or whatever I need to do, but, uh, we would, we would love to have kind of that line item built in at twenty-five hundred per year if possible and help us to continue to improve the facilities and, uh, bring these tournaments to town and try to get more people to our community while also supporting, uh, you know, all the kids around here that participate in that. So, that's really all I have. Um, I did bring a copy for each one of you that I'll give. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that I could about the ball association or what we're doing with the renovations.
Uh, I know that, uh, from what I've seen, I've been watching the progress of that all along, so, uh, I think it's gonna be a good addition to the community. I don't know that we'll be able to do the full fifty-five hundred, but, uh, we will, we'll take it under consideration, see what we can do.
I appreciate it. What, I got that fifty-five hundred because that's what a new scoreboard costs.
Sure.
So that's, that's part of it. But that never, for the first year, we're trying to get that done.
Okay.
And it's been a few years since I know that we've, you know, done anything or requested anything.
Is that gonna be ready up here this year?
So they're still hoping, at least maybe to play some tee ball on it, like later in June or something. So, um, yeah. Obviously, we're working with the city on manpower and their people to help, you know, do it. And so we're a little bit dependent on where all they get pulled and what becomes a priority, you know, any given day. So, it's been a little slower than we wanted, but there's been a lot more work and focus on here in the last couple of months. And from what I understand, that's a heavy focus and there's the next, you know, month or two to try to bring it to fruition.
Good. Alright.
My phone number and email is on there, so if there's any other questions or anything I can do, feel free to reach out.
Great, Justin. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time, yeah.
Appreciate it. While we're on that, we have a letter from the City of Dennison. Uh, Commissioners, Dennison Parks Director Committee is continually working to provide recreational opportunities for the community by improving the Dennison City Park. Recently, a doggone ball pit was added to the park and water lines for a hydrant at the shelter house was provided. Our goal now is to construct a restroom close to the shelter house, which would benefit the park, the museum, and cemetery. This, this is estimated cost around thirty thousand dollars. We have five thousand of that amount. We are asking the commission to help us towards meeting, towards meeting this goal. We thank your consideration of our request. The support of the commission has always been appreciated to Sarah Lee Dennison Parks Director Committee, Sarah Phillips, Vicki Cole, Mary Montgomery, and Judy Mc. And this is what I was, uh, the, in regards to the text that I got a couple of weeks ago that I told you about, that, uh, we were gonna ask them what they wanted the money for and everything. So that was, this is in regards to that. So we'll just have to take a look at the budgets that we have in there.
Looks like she got money in the first one. There actually is in special parks in practice, forty-three thousand five hundred.
How much is already encumbered?
The thing I need to see the list of annual appropriations.
What we approved, that's not out here.
Yeah.
I'm sure it will be once she does her bills.
Yeah.
Because there's a, there's a list that we do every year.
Right.
Unless we be adding another.
But I think right now, there's just five thousand dollars that's gonna come to be come out.
Right at this point.
Right at this point, I know, yeah.
So we have a list on here with the encumbrances.
Does it have a list?
This would be a list that shows all the appropriations.
Yeah.
The one that, um, shows like the USDA, um, you know, Martha's group up there. Yeah, it's, it's a whole list of just all the appropriations. It's not one of each. So Holton hasn't been asked for, for years, to my knowledge. They never, we've not concluded, they haven't needed.
Is that right?
Yeah, they've, they've not, uh, it's been several years since.
I don't know that, I mean, when was the last time they asked for appropriation?
I, I don't know for sure, but I know that they were, I know that they did, uh, years, years, years ago. And why, who knows?
Yeah, I did. What was the reason?
Maybe just for a turnover of people, you know, Diane Wilson used to be the head of it and then things changed.
Yeah. I don't think after Diane, then anybody really took it over.
They didn't really take it over, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't really know.
Yeah, I don't know the reason behind it. Good morning.
Good morning.
I got your message late, so I didn't bother you this weekend, but yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Please talk to me.
Yep. Um, that you, we'd like to have lots of roads after the meeting today.
Okay.
Lots of long track. Everybody's too busy, yeah.
Yep.
Good.
For you, alright.
You got one? Hopefully this will be a last ride away in the summer.
It's for Giant, down by Boyd. Sixth Street Terrace East of Boyd.
What is it? Oh, Sixth Street Terrace? That's gonna be down there, um, at Sixth Street disaster road, most of the city of Boyd. We'll make sure that sign is shown, but people are thinking to you. Yes, so just to put you guys in, um, you got two, what did I say? U-14 and Q, and Q Road. Um, stop sign has been misplaced and needs to be moved back. I'll take some pictures of it, reach out to Scott, to him for it today. That sign at one thirty-four, the, uh, resolution sign.
It's not, yeah.
Yeah, maybe. We didn't, we didn't, we just, oh, no, why is that?
Oh.
We'll look at it. Um, yeah.
You'll wire your own sign?
There was an accident that was, um, replacement of it. Two things that I saw, it was people off the road. The second thing was we had the street sign mounted on top of it. You know, have the street sign mounted on top of it.
Yeah. Okay. Two fifty-four and P. I got pulled in passing a Walmart, the stop sign was down at intersection.
Ally, did you, uh, go to Senator Marshall's event here at Holton?
Yes, I did.
Where was it?
So it was a, it was a giant communication. It was just kind of a private thing. It was like eighty, twenty, twenty-five minutes. Basically, Austin, Senator Marshall, um, the sheriff was there and Travis Barge was there and me and some of his staff. It was just.
Travis who?
Travis Barge. So, he came to share. So, it was just to talk about, well, you'll read it in this week's paper. I won't spoil it for it.
Right. We deal with small papers. Yeah, I think it's, I, I thought, uh, David had a. Yeah, I think it's, I thought David had a very good article.
Yeah.
I think these private meetings are a problem.
Yeah.
We're done.
I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah.
Did you ever get back to you?
Yeah, it was mainly just, hey, I visited Jackson County now, kind of thing. I mean, anyways. But you weren't invited, obviously.
Yeah, and I, to be honest, I think it was disrespectful to the commission after spending two years to be in communication with their office and we needed to get five minutes with the senator.
Yeah, and he was literally just down right there.
He was.
Yeah, he didn't really take any questions or anything like that. He was just basically talking.
And just to be fair, Therese Davis did the same thing in southeast Kansas, I believe. That's the one you went through.
That was a pop-up meeting that I tried to go to, and I got pulled that I couldn't because under the, under the House Ethics Rules, that since I was not in her district, I could not attend her pop-up. If she was not there, it was just her.
These, these private meetings, these private meetings are because they feel like.
They don't want to put up with the protests.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I, me being me, I downloaded a copy of the House Ethics Rules, and I have not found anything in there so far that says that me being a Kansan, I know we're taking up your time, but me being a Kansan, she represents Kansas, and Senator Marshall represents Kansas, and not just certain people, certain districts.
Right, she can still district anybody else, you know.
So I'm, I'm not, I'm not done with her A yet.
So tell David, I do appreciate this, this article.
Yeah, he was, yeah.
Had, had I not read his article, I would, no one would have known.
Well, it was kind of funny because he wrote the editorial without that information in it, and then it came, it got emails to us that morning, the same person who informed him to print it in the paper, so he was like, "I'm going to put this in here." I mean, he didn't.
I appreciate him doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
And then he left a comment, oh, and he was like, okay, we'll do it.
All right, let's go.
Okay. We've got a quote back here, a bridge over here on W four and three ten, and also a repair on W four and north, about quarter mile north of Nine Highway, with Husker Steel, that's where we brought the, the old bridges from. Here's the quote for the bridge, and that's the quote for the repair. Repair has to be done. The I-beams underneath this bridge, the, the bridge kind of goes up in angle when you cross it, and the I-beams are in there and kind of just rolled over, so that's got to be done.
So this is a needed ore, is that what you're telling me? This is, this is for the bridge.
This is for the bridge, it's a fifty-foot bridge.
And that's a quarter mile north, this is a quarter mile south.
Okay. Well, I said this is a repair. That has to be done.
Repair has not yet.
Yes, that one there, we probably try to get a bridge in every year. Matt also worked at Brady from BG's coming out today, meeting Matt on thirty about grant money for another bridge up, what do you call it, the Redding House Bridge. See, Dr. Brandon's, we're at, two days cleaning it out for the red. Then just plug it up and stuff.
And so I know that Husker Steel up there is who we normally get the bridges from.
Yeah.
Do we, do we put it out for more bids? It's the only bid we got? How does that work?
They've, they've always come in under everybody else.
Okay.
We can do as long as you do.
And this wouldn't be one of them that would qualify for a, for the two, but, no? Okay. Too much water?
Yeah. Okay.
How much is it for, Mark?
Uh, the bid for the bridge is for two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars. The bid for the repair is forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. I guess first thing, he knows what we have in our bridge plan. And is this going to be one that we're going to have to go through the rig of a road with the State Historical Society again and all that good stuff?
I hope not. It shouldn't have to.
We got the hands in under, but.
Oh, it's a big, yeah.
I've got, uh, running the bridge right here. Five-year bridge plan, something for me.
Is that where it come out of?
Is that where that would come out of? At least five-year bridge plans?
It's a good, like, half a million dollar bid.
Look on that, that was the one that, it's certainly printed out there. I'm looking at the budget stuff.
Oh, yeah, did you go overtime? Or is it like special?
Uh.
Yeah, before, I mean, before we approve that, I'd like to know what we have in the fund.
Same account, we took that last bridge, uh, two fifty-four, we had seven or some thousand off, and it was too high, and it cost us the other one.
And I just don't see anything on it. So. Yeah, I mean, I don't see it on any of these, so.
Okay.
I'd like to know if she just didn't pull because it's not, it's not a, so I need to know how much is in the fund before we can approve these. So we'll pay the lease for right now.
Okay. The chip and seal bid, you know, we sent out, and sent the bid back, and we talked about adding on for the three places on two fifty-four, and then one over here by Mr. Childs. He got me a quote back on what the addition is, and also over on, we have this S Road, where we've got blowout there, want to come in and tear that out, put asphalt back in. So those are the four fixes over here, and that's for the ass.
And that's with us, or with them, using the rock that we have, and they're just doing the oil and the blade, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So this additional bid is for two thousand, twenty-two thousand, four hundred dollars for the additional chip and seal on four places, two fifty-four in N four, two fifty-four in K five, two fifty-four in K two, and two sixty out, two sixty-eight in Q four. And then there's also an additional three thousand, three hundred dollars for asphalt, twenty tons, to fix a blowout on S Road. Have us stand, look at it. And where did that come out of?
We have to, we need the chip and seal out so that we're off.
Okay, so what did we, what did we budget for chip and seal this year? When we have budget, I don't have the information in front of me, so I'm leaning on somebody to tell me what.
I thought around two, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
Okay. And what did your original bid come in for the eleven?
About three, three, two, somewhere. So it's all this, we got wrong, something like that.
Hundred and fifty plus.
I'll probably take that out of the revenue.
Now, chip and seal, we do that half down on here, and we budgeted two hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred, and it came in at three hundred and forty-two thousand, eight seventy-five. So that leaves a balance of a hundred and ten, three seventy-five, we have to.
Okay. And what did we pay for the same eleven miles that we did last year?
Well, remember, that's the one where, I think it was in twenty twenty-three, remember the weather got cold and they didn't do anything at W over there, which I think was thirty-four miles, and then they had to redo one ninety-eight, which I don't think we ever paid for, and I don't believe money was held back. For those out of twenty-three, it all got paid out of twenty-four, so it was a four hundred, one thousand dollars. Thirty-five, uh, twenty-four.
I guess what I'm getting at, had that been a normal year and you've done eleven miles last year, has it gone up that much for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one year? For, from, from last year, per foot last year, I mean, what did it, what did it, do we have any other?
I don't check. I thought we were around twenties, I thought last year was about twenty-six thousand miles.
Yeah, I, Mark, before I can be comfortable approving any of this, I need to see some numbers.
Yeah, well, like I say, what, what I'm looking at here is the report that we had from three thirty-one, and we got it on four seven, that we appropriated the two hundred and thirty-two, five, for chip and seal, and it came in at, the bid came in at three forty-two, eight seventy-five. So that leaves us with a hundred and ten thousand, three seventy-five, we've got to come up with, plus the twenty-two, whatever that is, so, yeah. So a hundred and thirty-two thousand roughly, before we're going to have to come up with five or something worth of the chip and seal.
Thought we said we take that out of machinery, special machinery. It was a hundred and eighty-one thousand in there, we used only two thousand of that then.
Yeah, I, again, I need to see what, what's in all these accounts so we can make an intelligent decision based on what's in, you know, the rock and what's been coming in and what's staying.
Probably end of this week first, next week we're going to jump back up here on W and start doing that first two miles, and get the rock laid out to finish that up. We thought that maybe it'd be a good time to do that before we talk about deer run or school, but yeah, me and Matt and Brandon are probably going to deer run tomorrow. We're planning on, we're just, we're looking at. Do we want to get a survey out there? I'm, I'm concerned with that ground about there at the end. What we're talking about is if we do make that larger, it's got kind of pinpoint out there, you can go on the map, but to actually find that pin, that point, could it go off for that six-foot radius, a little bit, if you want.
Right. I think, honestly, I think that it would probably be a good idea to get that survey. That way, we know, we will know for fact what we're dealing with, rather than, well, you know, we're showing here, but we really don't know. We're showing on the map, but we really don't know.
With me and Brandon, we went out and looked at some stuff the other day and did some measuring things, and on the south side, where that fence is at, because I want, maybe that's where the line is at, so we pull off the fence, and that was like, not even close to all the top of the base, and we went by the power poles, you know, to pull off, and then it was better, but again, we're just guessing.
Yeah, and I, since, since this is a, this could become a touchy subject, with, we have to take anything over toward the north on there, moving, moving culverts, things like this, I think that I would, I would feel more comfortable from a, from a legal standpoint of knowing where everything was before I moved the route.
Can't, well, can't screw that.
I, so I'd say, I'd say let's go ahead and get it surveyed and be done with it so we know where we're standing.
Okay.
I mean, what do you guys think? Do you agree with that, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I was about to say, hey, spend the money.
I know.
All right, let's do it, yeah.
I know.
Maybe.
But we got to know, the county got it in their laps and didn't.
I can't believe there aren't existing surveys already out there for each one of those properties.
Have you checked the pressure leads first?
Well, I'm, I'm sure they're identifying all those pins.
See, because, I know, when Colton bought that property down, that, you know, where you go, remember, the well is, he owns that farm right there. And I can remember him going into the appraiser's office, and he was checking it all out and stuff, and he was looking as to where, and she's like, "Well, I think you don't own that road right there," but, you know, it's like, nothing's, nothing's right.
Well, you're saying that they do, that that was your son, is it called, his name?
My hold, um.
Okay, I need to talk about the native driveway, I guess.
Yeah, he owns part of Foster's driveway.
Driveway, yeah.
And, you know, and when they bought it, they just had to say, "Okay, that's mine," because that's what it did then all along.
All right, so it's okay if you guys will get that rolling?
Yep.
Okay, we're on the trip, get one of these second names, guys. Matt tells me they got two put in at one fifty-eight, West T, they did some vision of one eighty-two in E Road, knocked some berms off, but I've probably had to walk it before you chip and seal. It's like a montage, I'll talk to. We did some rock, we got J Road by the cemetery, K Road, one hundred and four, one eighteen, and apparently they got the river hall where the rock called out the lake, five and three, and two thirty-eight U to V, we got some rock all over there. The baffle balls are in the tank now, so that was a task.
Yeah.
We have a small guy to, 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 to. Got the mulch head off, so we have to pump it back on in. Get ready to dig the, in the hunt service this week, and the signs you guys talked about.
Do you know how many miles we ended up bulging, bulging back?
I was here, so I've got the, the license.
Just that sign's the only one I have.
On the deal, I think I said copies you guys do about that one ninety bridge, they all accepted.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, she, she said there has to be something that says, and I don't know if you were finding anything in resolutions, but there has to be something, like, that, that the tribe accepted that bridge. I found that letter that said that as of, on the date two thousand and four, that the bridge, the, where it got. that the bridge, the Berry Van was gonna take over that bridge. And, uh, they never accepted, never accepted it.
But they arbitrarily tore it out and replaced it. So, and so, okay, since we're on the bridge subject, what about the one up there on G Road? That they're gonna tear out?
Put a halt to it.
I would, I would, I'd put a halt to it and say, oh, we're not doing this again.
Can't do it. Not until we.
Back up, back up, back up. Where does it say that?
On G Road. That, what, we found out about it last week?
He, he called.
One of the road bridge employees, one of the.
Yeah, it was the person who called.
Yeah. It was on, it was on G Road, from looking at the map, it was, uh.
It's the one that, that the kid, the attorney sent you the information to, I think.
Root?
Yeah.
About, well, he said.
Detour information.
Was that, was that that one?
Oh, that's a different one. Oh, that's a different one.
Oh, yeah, that's a whole different one, sorry. There's only one place where G Road crosses a creek. And I'm trying to see where the crossroad is.
And that was gonna be done in June, wasn't it?
But he said.
Yeah, I think he said June, right.
I don't even really see a crossroad anywhere close. It's just kind of out there in the middle of nowhere. Two fourteen is the closest one. Uh, so two fourteen and go south. Between two fourteen and one ninety-eight.
So Travis said you're replacing that bridge.
Yes.
Yeah, I would put a false stop to it.
With no, no forewarning to us again, other than the phone call to one of our employees?
We need to see documentation of why it's being replaced, who's funding it, whether it's federal government, which I'm assuming, I don't know. And make sure that the documentation is gonna go to the state of Kansas. Um, that they're taking full responsibility on, I mean, they need our approval.
Yeah, they, number one, they need our approval for people to do it.
This one, she wants consent from Jackson County and Berry Van, so you need something that's gonna say that both people.
Right, because this can separate what's in future.
Right, this is, yeah, this is.
This can separate what's future state funding.
So it needs to, yeah.
So we, that needs to put the Bosch on it right now.
So maybe somehow this can be taken care of if we, you know, all agree on the other money. You know what I mean?
Well, I would, I would think that what you sent them, uh, would have been proof enough.
Right. And I went back through the whole file that we've got on that. And we had done the inspections on that bridge up until it repots.
It's still one in port, in ninety?
Yes.
And it says nothing identifies that that was the bridge in question. So did it not state?
I didn't send the whole file, I just sent that on cover page. But it's, it's got longitude and latitude right on the documentation, so.
I see.
Should be able to buy that and say, yes, it is a bridge.
Is she somebody that you've always worked with? I mean, it's like, is Donna Smith, is she somebody that you've always worked with?
Yes.
Yeah, because look, this, this is gonna be a big issue that we need to get taken care of right now. Brown would love to drag on. So, uh, you can take care of sending Mr. Root a letter.
Who's Mr. Root? All right.
Yeah. And, uh, indicate that if there is, to be no work done there, no detours, no anything, until it's approved.
Sure, I got a couple pictures of that, uh, bridge, what we're talking about, those tubes. No, for example, there's kind of the structure of what it, what there is, what's there now. This item's in math, it says why, and they key signs. Somebody has all different means up here.
You think the neighbors?
But anyway, there's the deck of the bridge up here. And, uh, it's got a lot of holes already.
Yeah.
If I didn't know, I had a party there.
Maybe, well.
Oh, are they really?
And the, the box, the other two.
This is the, uh, okay, I'm running westbound, two fourteen. Do you see the stop sign?
Oh, wow.
Yeah. There's the stop sign if you're going eastbound. There it is.
Hold count.
Do you see it? On the right-hand side? Up or off road? And again, I think what happened is somebody reworked this area here and they moved it over onto that street sign. It was a nice thing, but.
Well, I talked to the guy about going to fix it, he goes, gee, really, we should do it? But that's kind of admitting that we're wrong.
Yes, we would. No, it's not wrong, it's just when it's pointed out, it's in the incorrect place. It needs to be changed.
All right, so we'll see you back here at one?
Yeah.
Is that good with everybody?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Martha, we're running a little early, you want to jump on up?
Absolutely, if you guys are, I'm doing well, how about you?
Good, miss seeing you, but I'm glad I didn't see you.
Yeah, thank you for not coming to see us, I speak. Good morning, everybody, I'm Martha. I am the director and environmental health specialist for Northeast Kansas Environmental Services. We provide environmental services for Jackson County. And so we come once a year to do an annual report to you because we receive funding from you through interlocal agreement and our coalition. Um, so just to start off up at the very top, uh, we had fifty-three new wastewater permits, permit applications, so, uh, that was up from forty-four in twenty twenty-three, so that was. And for Linda, you're new, I'm gonna give you a little bit more information. You're other two have heard of our field before. We like, we permit all wastewater system work done in Jackson County. And so the property owner goes through a permitting process. Um, and so some of those permits are for new builds. Some of them are for failing systems that have to be upgraded to, to standards, you know? Um, so that's, that's what the first one is. Then on the next one down, we completed forty-eight systems, which means we issued final use permits. Lagoon owners, they got the fence put up and properly and it, and to regulation. Or if it's a septic system, we received a drawing of what was installed, so they received a final use permit for that. Uh, part of the code requires us to go through and check wastewater systems for property resale transactions. Property owner transaction, property owner A is selling to property owner B, so we're supposed to go through. We only did thirty-four of those in twenty twenty-four. I don't know if the market was down in, in, in the county, which is pretty common, you know, in all of our counties. We had less overall in that category for twenty twenty-four. Uh, we were down a few from twenty twenty-three, as you can see there. On those, Linda, I, we go in for a lagoon, check to make sure there's a fence, it's in good shape, no trees growing up, vegetation is down, it appears to be a healthy lagoon. Septic systems, we have the septic tank pumped out. We check from the ground level to make sure, see if there's any signs of past or present failure going on. And then if there's any issues with the tank, needs a backfill, inlet or outlet backfill, needs a riser, we require those to be upgraded and put in, installed properly. Uh, well screens, we checked well water for well owners for the county. Uh, we did thirteen of those in twenty twenty-four, which is down one from twenty twenty-three. That is not a requirement like the wastewater system checks are. Um, some lenders, when you're selling a house, will require your well to be checked. Uh, we did have a handful of new wells. We permit new wells in the county. And so that permit is basically, you're paying for us to come in and check the water once the water's hooked into the home, to make sure that it is good water. Because when they drill a well, they drill it, they dump a little bit of fluorination solution in to clean it, and they walk away. Then once that well is hooked into the house, then we go in and check for the EPA's minimum standards for safe drinking water, low nitrates, no colicorn bacteria or E coli. So, some of those thirteen well screens include a handful of new wells. Some of them are established wells that they just wanted to wellarche. Uh, we do consultations, we did seven of those in twenty twenty-three, which was up one from, I mean, twenty twenty-four, which is up one from twenty twenty-three. A lot of times, property owners have a piece of land that they're wanting us to come in and help them decide, hey, I throw wastewater system on here, I'm thinking about building down the road. And rather than going through the permitting process, which kind of, it has a year's timeframe, they say, okay, you know, we're thinking about building, but we're not ready to move forward with all of that stuff. We'll come in, charge them, you know, for that consultation. I'll go in and, you know, say, okay, now I think we could probably do that. Sometimes it improves soil profile to say, okay, you know, the soils are conducive for a septic system or whatnot on that property. Um, and then once they do the building, are ready to move forward, they'll apply for a building permit through the zoning office and a wastewater permit through our office. Any questions on those first five sections on, for any of you guys? Okay, all right. So we only really had one nuisance activity this year. Uh, we had a, it was reported to us that a fifth wheel RV was sitting on a property just outside of town here. Um, I work with the zoning office, I don't, and I can't remember if it was me that found this one or if it was someone in the zoning office. Because if I see it, I'll call Kate and say, hey, do you have a building permit on this one? She'll call me up and say, hey, we saw a RV, are you working on a wastewater system? And they just haven't contacted us about the building permits. So, um, they con, the, the zoning office sent a letter to them saying, you know, if you're gonna build, we need to get, get a building permit in place, gave them so many days. Um, this was last fall, I believe. They ended up moving out and, and not doing a building permit or whatnot. There used to be a house there that was in disrepair, the house got taken down, and they were living in the RV, thinking that that was okay, but unless you're building a house, that's part of your zoning requirements is, uh, to not be able to live in a, in an RV, so. And then we licensed the guys that install wastewater systems, guys, ladies, businesses. Um, and then also the guys that haul the wastewater, you know, pump out the septic tanks. Um, and then on a daily basis, just ancient home inquiries about wastewater well questions, environmental things. Um, we did update our website last, last June. Um, so I'd encourage anybody and everybody to get on our website, and that applies to all five of the counties that we cover, not only Jackson County. We put up, try to keep up-to-date pertinent information on wastewater systems, as well as all the county regulations, state regulations, links to various and some different pieces of information, you know, on how to take care of your wastewater, how to take care of your well. Um, you know, a lot of, a lot of good information on there for property owners as well as our installers and haulers. Um, then we have a Facebook page that we try to share information on as well. So what kind of questions do we have?
I got one, because I missed the meeting. So you usually put out a list comparing the counties with each thing that, uh, each one of these, like, five sections at the top.
Uh-huh.
How do we, how are we stacking up as far as with the other counties, like, with the new permits?
You by far have the most by, just because of the zoning and, you know, the building permitting process. Because they don't issue building permits without a wastewater permit.
But other counties do, don't?
No, they do not require, they don't have building permits, they don't have zoning. So this is the only zone. Couple of the others have what I would consider light zoning. Atchison County has a floodplain application in the GIS office. And I work with Roger Denton in the GIS office in Atchison County. So they're probably the second most building permits. Nima Hawk County's up there with quite a few building, uh, wastewater permit applications. They've got quite a bill, quite a bit of building going on up there in Atchison, in, uh, in Nima Hawk County.
And they're not zoning, they're, they're no those.
Donovan County has some light zoning. Um, you know, if you've got a hundred acres and you're wanting to put a house on, they don't require any type of zone, you know, there's no regulations regarding that. Um, we've got the little pamphlets in all of the counties, you know, that says, hey, if you're building a house, you know, this is what you need to go through in Jackson County, this is what you need to go through in Donovan County. You know, all of the counties that we cover, you know, there's regulations, you know, it's, you know, the permitting process basically is what it's going through. But, yeah, Jackson County is by far our most vibrant, our most active county, if you will, regarding wastewater permits. Well permits probably as well, because there's a rural district, rural water district that's not selling anymore meters. And so there's new. I don't know what the number is, but my understanding is the one that covers north of town here.
That's great, right?
I'm not sure what number it is. Yeah, that's, that's what I, yeah, that's what I've been told is they can't.
No?
No, I think it's, it's just, it's localized. I mean, this is basically where you're at for the most part, where the bridge is happening, they don't have lines sufficient.
Unless you wanna pay, have the lines sufficient.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta.
Big difference.
You gotta have, there's, there's a rather substantial expense to getting water, rather than, I think their source is fine.
Their source is fine, it's just you have, their infrastructure isn't.
Right. The way it was presented to me is they're not selling anymore meters, so.
Interesting. I do have a question. So in, in the regulations on sale of property, the way the regulations are now, it's, I use the word shall, should, may. Is it shall, should, or may have, can you find that? My question is also then, if a, if a wastewater facility is inspected and the property is sold in a timeframe that's not very long, do, I mean, are you going back in and re-inspecting it at sale?
If there is issues that need to be fixed, brought up, new, let's just say new ladder ones, you know, it's running out on the ground, it's old system, it's running out on the ground, and it's a quick sale, even if it's not a quick sale, we have a letter that we can send out that says, we're allowing you to close on this property, and then I've got this on my radar list.
Yeah. If it's been brought up and, and it's in good standing, and two years later that property sells, I mean, it seems silly to spend, I guess, in my opinion, to spend that much money to have it re-inspected two years later.
Well, there's a lot of failure that can go on with, with, especially a septic system, I'm just gonna say. You know, lagoons can get overgrown, you know, the trees start coming up, you know, up and.
Is there any timeframe that would not require a second inspection?
Um.
You guys follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, so if you bought a property and six months later you turn around and sold it.
We have done that for lagoons. Let's just say, Mark, you sell your lagoon, or you buy a, a property with a lagoon on it in October. And you're selling it again in March, you've gone through a growing season, or you've gone through a non-growing season, chances of that vegetation being overgrown and whatnot is pretty slim. So I've got a letter, you know, sometimes I'll say, hey, snap some pictures, send it to me and I'll be good with it. If it's going through, if you buy that property in March and you're selling it in August, the chances of it being overgrown and being, um, neglected, you know, potentially overgrown and whatnot, it, it's pretty good, you know, because most people don't keep their lagoons, um, mowed down. And so it's one of those things that, that's one of the maintenance, the basic maintenance things is keeping the vegetation down. Now, as far as a septic system goes, we really need to go in and check all of those septic systems, those septic tanks. You know, we just pumped one out over on F Road here last week. He popped the tank, the lid off, tried to put the hose down there to get the, the tank pumped out. There's usually a scum layer on top that he couldn't even put his hose down through there. And as he started pumping, it was full of, uh, wipes and paper towels and that kind of thing. That can happen in three months, you know, where it gets, people are just flushing the wrong things down in there. So regarding a septic system, we don't really have, unless it's unoccupied, you know, if someone tells us it's not been occupied, we don't go in and double check it. But if it's been occupied, we think it, it's necessary to go in and double check it just because of that abuse, that potential abuse.
But other than these other counties that are zoned, that may not be happening.
That is probably not happening. We do have a handful of realtors that are calling us up and saying, hey, I've got this property for sale. We need you to come in and check the septic system, because they know the value of keeping on top of these wastewater systems from the buyer's perspective. And we are working on the codes in all of the counties with the hopes of. And we are working on the codes in all of the counties with the hopes of mimicking the Jackson County requirements of checking all waste water systems because we know there's a lot of waste water systems out there that are not up to compliance. Running on the ground, so. Any other questions or?
You had sent, and I'm trying to find here real quick, uh, your office had sent a form that, uh, should take it, take any res, any conflict from somebody saying that they, they wanted, you know, who, um, I'm trying to say, they want to, you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, yes.
Okay, the resolution form, I guess. So, it comes to you first rather than coming to us.
Right.
Okay. One of the questions that had been brought up with that form is, is there really any teeth behind anything that we're doing?
My teeth, my judicial part of it comes from the county counselor, the county sheriff. That's, we rely on a higher authority to back us up and, and put those teeth in and, and make that happen. Because we don't have the authority ourselves. But we work with the county sheriff, the county attorney, the county counselor, whoever it is in place, to put that teeth in and, and to send that letter to that property.
Basically, they bring the violation to us.
Yeah.
And then we.
Yes.
Choose to have our party work through that.
Follow it up with a letter and.
So, any, anything that we have as far as?
Like?
Well, I can't tell what the, what the violation is. I think it's probably, I don't know if it's criminal violation at the end of the day. This is just a zone.
It's, it's a matter of backing us up as far as making the regulations, you know, the property owner follow the regulations, getting that lagoon fence right. It's probably the number one infraction that we need help, you know, from you guys for. So, um, we can, we can send letters and whatnot, and it sometimes gets it accomplished. But a lot of times, you've got those defiant ones out there that they, they're not gonna do it. And so, we need, you know, at least a letter, you know, and that other authority to help us out.
I, I have one more question. We had talked in the board meetings that, uh, it's possible that we're looking at raising our ask for appropriations for Northeast Kansas.
That's correct.
Have, did you, has, has the board, has all of their last, was that discussed at the last board meeting?
That was not discussed at the last board meeting, other than, um, one of the county commissioners brought up, you know, how it could be reduced instead of increased because all counties are tight on their budgets and whatnot. And he was trying to, you know, kind of throwing out some ideas as far as passing along part of your, uh, interlo, your, uh, contribution, your yearly contribution, passing that on to somebody else, maybe the installers, maybe raising the fees of the property owners and, you know, utilizing our services. And it didn't go very far, but just because, you know, we feel like we're one of the higher permit fees, you know, in the area, um, as far as permits and the installer fees and that kind of thing. We didn't feel it was right to pass on too much more to them at this point anyway.
I would not be in favor of passing additional, I mean, fees on, it's already cost enough to have a lagoon or a, a septic system cleaned out. I mean, because the last time I do, the fees from your agency, not, not yours, but from the agency, were higher than the guy pumping the pool out.
Right.
That just seems out of balance.
And I'm, I don't know what those guys charge. And, you know, it sounds like you have a, a grip on how much it costs.
Well, the reason I brought this up was asking that, if you are, if the organization is going to ask, be asking for more next year, we need to know that pretty soon.
For the twenty-six.
For the twenty-six budget.
Right. And I'm telling commission, county commission at these meetings, plan on the same fee in, as, as in the past because we've not gotten to the point in our discussion where we're ready to go to the counties and say, we need another two hundred and fifty dollars, you know? Because it, I mean, we're talking minimal, I say minimal, you know, it's not gonna be a thousand or three thousand or anything like that.
Because you've not raised rates since, since.
Since the inception, right. In twenty, twenty-plus years, it's always been that same ten thousand dollars. And it's to the point where, to keep us solvent, you know, we're thinking about moving, you know, that county contribution rate up just a little bit. But for your twenty-six budget, no, it's gonna remain the same. We're just kind of kicking it around in our board meetings for possible future.
And I, like, I just wanted to get that brought out because that way, we got an idea that, you know, down the pipe, it's coming along.
Right, not for twenty-six.
Okay, perfect.
Not for twenty-six.
All right.
Any other questions, great questions?
Can't think of anything.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your support in the past. We'll continue doing your environmental services. Reach out to us if you have any complaints, come to you. We're happy to work with you and, you know, get these things taken care of. Mr. Kelly, you want my card?
Oh, I got it, I got it.
I'm gonna give you one since you're new. You've got me. Anybody else? We're all good. Thank you so much, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mark.
Today's incident, so it works everything.
Nice drawing, really.
Yeah.
Right. But, yeah.
You were responding to.
Do you want anything else?
Well.
You have two, it'll be a full.
So, these are them having conferences because I haven't processed. But everything is entered, that is you.
Okay, thank you.
So, that is as current as I can.
I got you.
Really, do you want your reports out, or will you never, not, probably not. She can't print out there.
Thank you. David, are you ready to jump right in?
Sure.
One thing I have a question on, uh, does this have to do with Dan also? Or should he be in these meetings or you're gonna, you're gonna talk in separate?
Him and I can talk to separately.
Okay, first.
In terms of what I've got to talk to, they're not asking anything on that.
Okay, perfect. All right, so, you got your cheat sheet?
It's possible. I had it.
Pardon, you want me to move up there?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be great.
How long will you want, of course?
Uh, how long?
Thirty? Call, I have one.
Well, I'm not expecting there to be a lot to talk about, so let's, let's go twenty.
Okay.
Remove the building executive session for matters of attorney-client privilege. Um, for thirty minutes in this room, starting at ten oh three.
Ten oh four.
Ten oh four.
Okay, so probably we would have to go to, to executive session for attorney-client privileges. Uh, hold on, a possible.
Yeah, if the claims involving legal claims against the county and had a counsel and who else? Can I cancel it, cancel it again?
Okay.
Okay. That's it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say a sign, don't you carry.
I'll honestly, I wish.
This is a lot. Wings are bruised, yeah. I think we're bad, babe, so.
Our pizza on these.
Yeah, you're gonna head.
Monkey brownies.
Anyway, if we proceed, if we improve.
Yeah, I could take those records, I just.
The comments are a little, yeah.
The dark side of the show.
So, we're all, I mean, yeah.
Or is it a good thing every day?
Oh, yeah.
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 Nice, I'm worried.
Yes.
Yes.
Nice, I'm worried.
Yes. Yeah, we would have to.
Right.
I would. Yes. Because you got me covered.
Isn't that nice?
It's very nice.
Isn't it nice? I'm glad that, that helps. I'm here to help, that's all I'm here to do is help.
Yes. No, I like it.
Good.
Thank you for saying that. I appreciate it. It's good.
Dave, what are you doing?
Are we good?
No?
Okay. Fifty seconds, he says.
They worked. Because they opened the door like eighteen minutes.
No, it's literally, it's not thirty.
All right.
I heard thirty.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll clear it for me.
Thank you.
Good.
Does he answer your title?
Yeah.
Just let, let me know, I'll call Dave Scott. Sorry about, if you have any.
Just say, can you, um, give me the correct number to, you know, to, to me to reach out to Dave?
A phone number, please?
Yeah, whatever number he gives you, that'll actually answer.
You, and you may check with Kate Green, shoot.
Yeah, I checked.
Too good, because I know better than to call in the office. So, it could send back to me and the current version of the rights.
I don't know if they, they have, I can pass off the word versions of drawing.
Communications?
Try to have some version of choice, so. I know of never I gave one.
Oh, by the way, and that is one of my recommendations, it's going to fast amendments. Didn't go somewhere, I think it inserted in your book.
What's that?
Look at the, at the end of your.
Look at fast.
Yeah. Because I made their life miserable last week when I asked for, hey, I need section thirty-six. And they're like, yeah, no idea, can't help you.
Gotcha. Thank you, better be able to be in here.
Yeah, definitely. So, good things are going.
Kate's supposed to come here, I hope for a little half hour, right?
Thank you.
Yeah, Kate's supposed to be down here.
Well, I know that I'm gonna give it to her, actually.
All right.
She's gonna call me back.
That's fine.
And is it the current?
Current version of what's sold. I don't want all seven versions.
How do you know they won't be setting that?
I don't.
Because you know, they're going through and they're barking out and.
Really? I have no idea what they're gonna.
Yeah, I mean, I was just setting. So. You may want, you may want that from Kate.
Um, it was a different.
If I have your.
No. That, that's all right, I use, I just use the book.
Okay.
That you have.
You didn't set up the solar regulations?
No, it's only my.
Oh, gee.
When did you create the Board of Zoning Appeals, just being after I was looking for?
To zoning appeals? It was, not the, not planning commission, it was the, the second, second.
Yeah, they've been. They've been around for ever, I mean.
I remember going to a hearing down at the, uh, agency, uh, on Asian purpose, I used, I did.
Senior Center.
Years and years and years and years and years ago.
Kate would have a better idea.
Usually, they are enacted at the same time.
Yeah, there wouldn't be much reason not to have a great form.
But, but the planning commission was created by resolution and the board zoning appeals created by regulation.
By the what?
By the regulation. So, you adopted the zoning regulations and created the planning commission. So, the planning commission was created as an entity and then you adopted the zoning regulations and zoning regulations created before the zoning appeals. And it's like, and it's, that's not that it's unusual to do it that way. It's just, I was trying to figure out plan.
Yeah.
They probably didn't agree until.
It was before two thousand and seven, is what I know.
Yeah, it seems like I read that resolution one time when they created it. And I was thinking it was maybe in the seventies?
I, what I, what I do know is I tried a case, um, involving a parking garage that was permitted, it shouldn't have been. And it was a jury trial, I think, and it was, like, for whatever reasons, nasty or bad, go forward, the language is fine. Because somebody had a non-conforming use, because we gave them a permit, we shouldn't have given.
Okay.
And the jury, you know, we got a verdict out of it, but it was like, so it was like, over the river, through the woods to get to the point, but.
Yeah.
But it's like, hey, all you have to do, and you're not in this case, I've got one of these, you're done, I can't. I know it's a non-conforming use, we don't think it should be a non-conforming use, but Judge Goddard, who was, was, please, God, for a conditional use, right? I just wouldn't.
So, how do they build it?
Yeah, this is a deer park.
Okay.
And, um, the county viewed it and we viewed it, that's raising deer as an act. And the Department of Agriculture viewed it as an act. And the neighbors didn't, they sued, and Goddard says, no, it's not.
What is it?
It's, it's commercial use, requiring a conditional use program. And we just told them, okay, keep hunting your deer, please apply for a permit. And they sued us instead, and we were taking their multimillion dollar domestic deer hunting.
So, people would come onto the property and they'd pay?
You will get a deer.
Oh. Okay. So, show, can my nerve get in, or can I do any here?
Yes. And that, that.
Molsen's been going on for four years.
It's going up on appeal now as of speed, but it's like, you wouldn't think... That, you know, raising domestic deer to get shot in a, like, Bambi is a commercial use, but it is. On my part of the world, that's...
No.
I grew up in southwest Kansas and that, when, we thought it was really terribly unscoring when they started doing that with pheasants.
Oh, yeah, the English present, that concept?
Yeah, where they, they take, take a pheasant, stuff his head under his wing and turn around three times, sit in it, you didn't have to almost kick it to get it out. Thank you very kindly. Have yourself a day.
Thanks again.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Alright, this is the information only that the Jackson High School report. And the clerk's office got hold of everybody last week as far as Tim's building, correct?
It's worth one.
For Tim's building. Right by the tower. Jay had Mayor's Tower.
Oh.
They were writing a check.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Writing a check.
Okay, so here's the, yeah, here's what we need to sign, so I just wanted to make sure everybody knew what that was. Total amount, that was sixty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-five thirteen. And that's come out of, uh, evidence room and bid inspection funds that Tim had money in. It actually saved a lot. I, I remember when he came through and showed pictures of that and what he was gonna do. And I think at that time he was over a hundred pounds of dollars in that building. Yeah. And are either of you interested in proclaiming... The week of June ninth through June fifteenth, which includes Father Day as Men's Health Week per month?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh-huh. I, I, I'm leaving it up to you. I don't, I couldn't care less on that, so...
Who's that, right?
From the Men's Health Month Coalition. And we have a courthouse lawn building use permit request from Jamie Molsen for the Holton Band Program on May the sixth.
Think that'll be okay? Okay?
Yep, I think it'll be okay. Restrooms is possible, electricity, yes. Uh, and I think the last, and the last time they want chairs too? I think, I think the last time they wanted chairs, I think. So, probably need to have a check on that, calling to check on that, see if it does or not. So, do we need just a mo-, do we need a motion to approve this?
Just send it down with this, but I can make one.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and do that, everyone will make it all proper. Here, I'll give you this.
That's alright. I know if we allow the lawn use for the band, Holton Band?
Second.
Okay, so we promptly moved the second to approve the Jackson County Courthouse lawn building use permit for the Holton Band for May the sixth. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed, same sign, most in care. No, Chamber didn't approve this.
Didn't you? We can't either, Zoe.
I thought, I thought we were all supposed to go through them. I know this isn't, but... Kate, how you doing? Not too bad. Me, I have a question for you. Um, did Holton Band run the law use permit through you guys first? For, I mean, the Chamber approval's not on here, that's what I'm wondering. Okay. Okay, I mean, so, cause that was, I thought that was the, uh, way that we're gonna do it, yeah. So, I mean, we, we went ahead and approved it, but I just wanted to double check and see and make sure, we need to start making sure that that goes through you guys first, so... Okay? Oh, gotcha. Yeah, yeah. So, uh, well, I, I think we'll, yeah, okay, yeah, I think we'll, I think we'll do, we'll just move forward with this one on, on this right now and, uh, from now on, we just need to make sure that it runs through you. Okay? Alright. Okay. Alright, sounds good. Appreciate it. Alright, goodbye. She's not sure if it was or not, but she said she was out quite a bit last week, so...
So who has that law? We do?
They filled that out in my office.
They filled, oh, Jamie filled that in your office?
Yeah.
Okay. So, from now on, if you get one like that, it needs to go across the street to the Chamber first. For them to approve it, cause they're supposed to vet everybody, the, the whole band, I know, we're not, I'm not too concerned about them.
So, actually should go back and re-Chamber first before we get it?
Yes. But I said for this one here, I said, we'll go ahead and waive that and do that. It should go over to the Chambers first and they approve it, because they have to vet everybody, uh, that wants to use the lawn building. Yeah. No, yeah, we, we, Jamie's at, uh, I think, she filled that if you'd like.
But everybody would...
Wasn't he? Somebody else in the house?
No, no, I mean, sure, yeah.
So, I'm just, I'm just asking, what if somebody wanted to use a gazebo to get married in? You wouldn't send that to the Chamber, would you?
The Chamber was supposed to vet everybody.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
That, yeah, that was the agreement, that they would vet everybody that wanted lawn use permit.
Okay.
And then, the, the reason it came up, I'm trying to think.
Second reason is that capital has an issue in their, their law.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So that's, that's why they agreed to vet everybody beforehand. Cause I think before it was just that, we said nonprofits were fine or whatever, but not all nonprofits are fine.
True.
So, that's why we said the Chamber had to vet everybody. But, like I say, for this here, uh, we'll waive that and... Payroll change those...
Do you, where do you think those, those Kansas Farm Health Services?
Farm Health Services? No. Where are these Kansas Farm Health Services?
Are they?
They weren't on the agenda today. I just now looked at the board statement.
I'm not sure what it's called ultimately, but I'm not sure. Kate, are you? No, it's gonna be next week. I have no clue. I've ne-, I've never heard of them. Yeah. I have no idea what it is. Alright, so we had payroll change for Michelle Litter in the chairperson's office for a length of service increase on, you're gonna guess that's already settled? I would say. Did you bet on this?
That's four.
She been here, she been here ninety-eight or whatever.
Only a year.
A year?
Yeah, she's been here, yeah, she's been here a year. My side, actually, we're, we're down first to be here.
Okay, so you wanna ask a piece about that?
You ready for me now?
Well, you can bring like books with you this time?
Huh?
Just a few books.
Couple.
Is that a little light reading material?
Little bit.
Okay.
They had your, um, flu shots and your... Ask her if any of them got moved up first in the year. I'll just, I'll just start going through my stack here.
Yeah, everything but, yeah.
I'll find it. That needs to replace the one that you got, cause I spelled somebody's name wrong.
So there should be a sheet that shows.
Okay, you got a sheet?
Uh, yeah, that is in the first, it's the first page in your zoning regs. So you guys have a tab that says zoning regs? Is that a refresh page? I, I know, I spelled Murphy wrong, so... Goes right here. Oh, I got something.
What'd you say?
She's checking.
Okay.
She's pretty sure. Someone, someone help me.
I have my book here.
Your zoning regs updates.
Your files?
More book updates, just, just... More book updates, we're glad. Okay.
Um... That's one special use. Oh, that goes with it.
Alright, so the planning meeting... Last week approved the special use permit for Gordon Custom Sawmill and by due, and we have a resolution here.
Well, that's for the zoning change.
What's that?
It's the zoning change first and then the special use.
Okay, zoning change first. Uh, zoning from A two, zoning change from A two commercial ag to...
A one to A two.
A one to A two, okay. To A two, okay. What resolution number would that be?
It's like eleven.
Anyway, show up, Joe.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. It's crystal.
Oh.
Hello.
What's the resolution?
She's getting it, I think.
Okay. 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 Alright, sounds good, thank you. We have your anti-animals built in. Okay.
And you said, what resolution was that, eleven?
Yes, twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five dash eleven, right.
Yes.
So I will, uh, entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven. Okay?
So what?
Second.
Okay, so we promptly moved the second to accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven, uh, for Gordon Custom Sawmills. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign, okay, care. So now we need to do one for the, do we need to have a motion on that for this, or is that just you?
No, that's just me, and if you guys think that's appropriate. There, there isn't anything that specifically says sawmill or special use, but it would be under, uh, eleven C. Commercial development of natural resources and extraction for all materials.
I have no problem with it myself. I spoke to the member of the planning commission, he said that Chris had his ducks in a row and explained everything very well, and so I've got no problem. So, like I said, that's just you, we don't need a motion or anything to approve the special use permit?
No, not unless you guys have other requirements.
Okay.
Do you?
No, I, I'm talking about this.
I just need a copy of the resolution. Isn't it starting? This is March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, we should probably say twenty twenty-one. It's only out. It hasn't been presented to them yet. Okay, that's fine, so, thank you.
Oh, I got you, okay.
Yeah, that's just so you guys can see what's, what went on.
I just figured this year's not much.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I can see any other misspelling or whatever too.
So the last, next, the last big paragraph in here. It said that Chris Gordon, not built to ask, Chris Gordon had forty acres. Chris said that he had four point eight one acres. And how did that affect it?
Uh.
Why was the question?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, I just.
The, uh, second, the last paragraph on the bottom, it should be a B inserted after wood. Nick Lake stated that would be up to the county commissioner.
No, I correct it for me.
Yeah, I did.
Jack and I, yeah, just correct it and I'll correct your copy.
Yep, no, I did. Now, like I said, that's the only thing I saw. So it's a good meeting?
It is, yeah.
Sure?
Yeah.
So when's your next work session?
Uh, the twenty-fourth.
Six o'clock.
Yeah. Turn the letter, what's mine? See a purple letter? You're good with that?
Yeah, I didn't sign it. I mean, I thought.
Yeah, I didn't need to sign, but I need to sign it and send it out.
We go up into studios, everything together.
Tell you what. It's the next one, in May. And I've already talked to you all about that.
Oh, yeah, this is nice.
Well, that's just the special use for like auto repair.
Okay.
Uh, eighty-one zoning.
This is a guy that's been doing this for a while?
Uh, I don't really know how long it's, I just.
They call it.
Yeah, yeah. And you got everything that you needed on the, the resolution for the appeals for Gordon? I don't know. Zoning questions. I have it written down on here and I will. She looked up on the email, so you know, I gave her her number, yes. There's a. You were the only one here at the time of the nineteen ninety-three zoning.
Oh, right.
I'm, I'm trying to, to figure out, um, how they went about when they adopted zoning and.
Should be a resolution.
Nineteen ninety-three, I, I pulled up that resolution. Because a lot of the, I don't know if it was like a blanket zoning happened during that time. On existing businesses and things that were already operational. Because on our map now, when we have a new zoning district or parcel has been rezoned, we have that resolution on the map and the date that, that resolution. Uh, a lot of the older ones, just say nineteen ninety-three dash five, which is that blanket resolution adopting zoning regulations.
Yeah, literally, they would probably grandfather it in, I would guess.
Because I'm coming up with that a lot, if somebody has questions about a certain parcel and there isn't, there isn't a file like I have now that has all the details on the zoning change, so.
Did you look back at minutes to see who was?
And, no, not in the first notice, but there, there, there just aren't any files, period, for a lot of those businesses that I guess were.
I got it.
Very hard to get, so. Um, that came up last week.
In what way?
Um, question about compliance, uh, business being in compliance.
Okay, and so there's just no record that it ever been reached out?
Right, other than this, this layer that we have on our, on our map showing different zoning districts. You know, we have it labeled as that business zoning.
Okay.
But there isn't a file specifically on that parcel.
Or?
And on, on your map on the parcel, it just says nineteen ninety-three dash five.
Five, which is the resolution.
Which is the resolution, so, yeah.
So I don't have any. I don't have much history.
Yeah.
On how that happened or the approach or whatever, so it's probably grandfathered.
Like I say, I would, I would guess it probably, that my theory would be that when they approved ninety-three day five, that they just grandfathered all existing businesses in whatever.
They would vet the late.
That would fit into that category.
But my kids, so, like in the beginning book, zoning book, is there anything, I mean, that company, there was a company that wrote all that up?
That was in twenty-ten, twenty, two thousand nine.
Okay.
That's our latest one.
Okay.
That we've been.
Okay.
The statute that, that created this whole thing was passed in eighteen ninety-one. Basically, the planning commission zoning, it might have had some kind of different scheme before that, but that was nineteen ninety-one when the current statutes were created, so. But it wouldn't be out of the hand to say that they, either they completely remade what they did in that period of time, or. Or, I don't know.
Well, we have like nineteen sixties, nineteen seventies records, like building permits and stuff.
Yeah, but, but you don't have where the zoning back then, was actually zoned?
I mean, the old files are not great.
Yeah.
So. I just wanted to let you know that I, that came up last week.
Okay.
Um. And then, let's see.
Did it, before we go on, did it go up because somebody had complained about what was going on down there, or?
I got an email asking if there were any complaints, dumping complaints, dumping violations, uh, things of that nature.
Okay.
Was there, was it?
It wasn't trees.
Now, we're pretty ready for.
Check.
Dumping?
Or an attorney's office was inquiring about the property?
If there were any violations on the property.
Okay.
No, that, that's what I'm saying, what kind of business?
Oh, is.
Would, would be questioned.
Well, I'm not quite sure what he does there now.
This one?
Yes. You know, I think that there were some old storage, like, uh, oil tanks and things of that nature there. At one point, maybe that's why. But I checked the EPA site and there, there aren't any violations on that property either.
Excellent.
I'm sure that they were, well, reach out or go online and look at that website, see if they can see. Okay. Um, then there was a question on the insurance letter, the letter that you were gonna send to the insurance company.
Yeah, I've done it, yes.
And then, have we heard anything about the, uh, MIA annexing that property?
Uh, I went down the hall and spoke to the city attorney for MIA and said, there's probably a straight line. And I haven't been back yet, so I think the city attorney has been alerted to.
And I was asked by, um, one of the planning commission if, if we, if he would be reimbursed if he went to a solar facility to check it out for hotel gas.
I think the statute says if you can reimburse him for mileage and expenses, yeah, you can't, you can't pay the expenses on the ticket for that one, but. Um, we can't pay them, but we can re, re.
Reimburse.
Reimburse for. Yeah, if that's your, if that's your desire, it's, planning commission?
Yeah, and I can just take that out of, um, my funds.
We'll wait for it, yeah.
Says, members of the commission shall serve without compensation. Me, I think, I just remember there being something in that AG's opinion, so compensation means, you know, pay, not expenses or anything like that, so I think so. If you're okay with the travel and not paying for the time, just hotel and allowance, it should be okay.
So just tell him one, if there's something out or?
Well, two, uh, one did not indicate that he wanted reimbursement, so.
I'm glad.
Yeah, same here.
Then he said it was just, it would just be for gas and, um, hotel that he would pay for some things.
Okay.
Oh. That's. I say, that's it.
Anything on the property at Emma that built the floodplain?
I haven't had a chance to go on, um, Division of Water Resources to contact them. Actually, I did, I take that back, I did. Uh, there was, um, an elevation certificate granted for the house across the road, but no other permits have been issued. So I just need to contact Division of Water Resources, talk to her and see what their action would be.
And then what will our action be?
Right.
I mean.
Right.
No building permit.
No building permit, nothing, yeah.
No building permit.
Operating a business.
In the floodplain.
And built the floodplain.
Well, then, I guess we find that. Sorry, I forgot what to do.
I, I'm not sure what the business they're operating.
It, it just looks like it could be, but we haven't verified that.
What they're doing there.
They built the mortar buildings out of, you know, that kind of thing? Yeah, well, I think they just kind of treat it as an unpermitted structure, I mean, I'm not sure if that's a separate resolution on his own, but. Lack of the building, you know, lack of building permitted, they're occupying, I assume, presidential, so, notification, so. Yeah, that would be the thing.
So we're not required to give them one because of where they've built it? And so what happens to the structure, I guess?
Well, they could, I mean, if they could clear the floodplain problem with the state. Because you guys, you have a floodplain resolution here?
Yeah, they would have to build above the base flood elevation.
With state or not?
We don't know, I mean, so they're supposed to get a survey. Um, and work with a surveyor to get the, the dirt work plan to build if they're not at or above that one, uh, elevation. Um, and then they have to get a survey afterwards too, once they have their pad and everything built up to verify that it is above.
Okay.
So they have.
They're probably saying they would state it required.
Yes.
How would they build the pad up if they're gonna move the building up?
Well, if you're saying if they had done.
If they had done it right.
Oh.
They would have had to have done.
Sure.
Yeah, but it's just a matter of which resolution they're violating. Means the floodplain that they're violating here, the kind of permit.
Yes.
For buildings, all, all of them, then probably the idea is to have to start again, you know? Because you can't, you know, retract it, probably.
Well, I'm curious too.
The floodplain one is the, the major issue.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm curious too, because, uh, the, the building looks big enough that it was commercially built, I'm going to guess. It's not, it's not a small one?
No, it's not small, but I've seen a lot of pad buildings that are bigger than that.
Yeah, so I, I agree there, but when I say commercially built, that's when you come in and build it like shelves or, you know, truss rows or something like that. And most of the, uh, well, as far as I know, every time I've had anything done, if you didn't have your building permit on site, they weren't gonna do anything with it.
Yeah, that doesn't work, yeah.
The ones, the ones I know was that if you didn't have a building permit, we're not working on it.
There's a number of those where they'll. They'll just say, yeah, I'll build it, and they do it, and you do it, but problem.
The planning management resolution is twenty-ten dash fourteen. I don't know that it's in there, but I kind of kept the floodplain stuff out of it.
That was nice of you.
You want a copy of it?
Well, let's do this, can, can you like, is there anything, can somebody give me an address and whatever you got on it? Well, let's do this, can, can you like, is there any, can somebody give me an address and whatever you got on it? Just mail it to us, like.
On the property?
Huh?
On the property and the area of the resolution?
Yeah, and that part, and that part of the rags, because I just feel like I can kind of put, put it on the ground and see it. Have heart enough to see the ways of addressing it, so. But I think we both have to start the process. These are pages that.
Thanks for that, alright, appreciate it.
Yep. Probably need to set your session up. Turn on the key.
That's it.
Huh?
That's it.
Okay, we have to do the exec. For twenty minutes. Fifteen?
I mean, I have a...
Okay, come on.
Thirty? Twenty?
Twenty, that's right. Hey, what do you wanna give? I gotta get some new data.
The, the, the twenties, sorry.
Twenty, um, okay. We're going to execute the section purposes of attorney client privilege to include Kate Misters in this room for...
Sorry to get twenty four, twenty minutes, sorry to get twenty four.
What is, what is the attorney client privilege format is, uh?
Oh, sorry, it's for, uh, um, I guess.
Confidential information and attorney client.
Okay, okay. So. Okay, so the problem you've decided to go into attorney client executive session for attorney client privileges, uh, confidential information, any further discussion for twenty minutes in this room, beginning at eleven twenty five, seven?
Twenty four.
Twenty four. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing done, if we've been done, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, moving to carry.
We're gonna extend, I think, sorry.
Okay.
Motion to extend for fifteen minutes?
Sir.
This problem is decided to extend for fifteen minutes, uh, any further discussion? Hearing done, all the favors say aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carried. Okay, so the problem you've decided to extend for twenty minutes, any further discussion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
See what happens for a bit here, for next person.
Thanks, Kate.
See you in there.
Got your head. So, the payroll change for...
Thank you.
Oh, perfect, okay. The payroll change for the district's offices is the vote.
Okay.
Set out in the way. We've got some amendments here.
Just thought we got a slack moment. Letters had sent the evidence, got a quest in foundation.
Okay.
From the copy, copy sent to. The information that you sent out in email that deals with the, um, R O W, um, with the tribe. When were, when were we planning on talking through that? And what letter will we send to them? Well, you guys have that, you've got that issue of the, the bridge, I think it's time.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. And the only thing is, like, what I know is some historical documents I didn't mention, and at a certain point, we've got, got plays in here, we have. I mean, you have to prepare for that sooner or later. Yeah, so, I mean, that would be my thought, if you have to pick first, first reveal is probably this one. I mean, I don't think I'm gonna talk to Darren first, I think we're gonna grab him a letter first, and him, and call him right after, and say. Yeah. We're not, this isn't just... This bridge situation is, uh, and...
Have you heard anything back from Darren as far as your letter here?
Oh, no.
Yeah. And?
That feels because you don't get to do the bones for it, bones, so they need us to just kind of leave that. Right, I mean, since we, since our house receives some of the bones.
No, you had to get them rid of it, sorry.
Alright.
It's just part of their grand people, with the day.
So, just me, me saying, sign?
Yeah, I can fill them all good.
So, you just, you say with your name? John, we'll see you later, see you next week.
Alright, you betcha. Have a safe trip around. Enjoy us fine day.
There you go. Alright, probably the next thing we have to talk about is the request for bolted ball and Henison. Apparently, from what I'm seeing here, bolted ball has received donations since from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty three. Uh, the one, two five thousand and one twenty five hundred.
And so how much, so do we get, do we get white ball association all then?
No.
That thing, we get the twenty five hundred?
Hoyt and May or mine.
Mine, okay.
School district, mine ball association.
And you get twenty five hundred, okay.
Maybe five thousand?
Yeah, twenty five hundred each.
Right, okay, that's what you're asking?
Yes, so together.
Yes.
Okay. That is a history.
Oh, history, okay, perfect.
Okay.
Alright, so... Oh, yeah, we gotta go over there. So, if I'm looking right, then Bishop Parks and Direct has sixty three, three seventeen encumbrances.
You said it, that's how much?
Uh, sixty three revenue, revenue to date. Is this one on the back there? Out of the ones we just got, these are needed reports that we just got from Aaron.
Well, I think you only have one set of that.
Oh, okay, this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, there's been very convincing, so, okay.
Yeah, nineteen thousand came in, so sixty nine, three seventeens, what it looks like we have in there, and... Encumbrance is the date.
She brings her point four in.
Okay. Okay, that's from twenty four, sixty three is to twenty four.
Okay, so I think, I think you probably got forty three. I think I want to do what I want to.
Forty three, five.
Yep, I agree with that.
Okay. Books are balanced.
That's good.
Sorry, I'm trying to...
Oh, you're good, okay, so the, so our books are balanced here, and this is what we have in there. Right now, right? So, so here, I'm trying to figure all this out. So, encumbrances is right here, ten thousand.
Right.
One hundred twenty nine ninety nine. So, we have an unencumbered balance in of this, nineteen three hundred, is it correct?
There's, there's a, pardon that up down here.
Well, yeah, I see that down there, but here, it shows what the unencumbered balance is in Parks Direct.
But I think that is projection.
Okay.
That's not, that's not actually act.
So, and, and that's the problem, we're fumbling through this, and, and if we have a list of the past schools that are on annual basis.
Do you have a list of it's on, it's attached? Oh, okay, okay, so there's twenty fours.
Okay, here's twenty fours, which was Pride of Hoyt, the equipment library expansion, the storage.
That's not on an annual basis?
No, it's a way we can all pay faster.
Okay, so if you want, if you want an annual basis, then the Jackson County Historical Association appropriation, uh, Circle of the Ball. Hoyt and May at a ball, so the Royal Valley Recreation, five thousand. Uh, which donation for Hoyt Royal Fire Department, Nettawaka Athletic Company donation. So, the ball associations are what we're looking at right now, right?
Right, the only thing that we're doing on it, we've done on repetitive annual basis.
Well, I'm looking back at twenty four, so I don't know if we've done, we, we know the library is a one-time thing, Pride of Hoyt, do we do that every year?
We've done it for the last two years.
Well, that's on me, so it's out, okay, so that's a twenty eight hundred dollar for that one, Pride of Hoyt.
So, that's different than the ball association.
It all falls under Parks, what I'm trying to get is a list of, uh, on an annual basis.
Right, I know how much really actually comes out.
Yes.
Okay, Jackson County.
See if we can add to that.
Okay.
I mean, based on what money's come in, uh, how much is left over, if we do all the ones that we did last year, the year before, the year before that, then we're gonna add to that.
Okay, so that'd be Circle of the Ball. Circle of the Recreation, right there, and five hundred dollars. See, Henison Parks in there, we haven't anything, bolted ball, bolted park around it, but we didn't do anything last year.
Yeah, Dennis doesn't ask for money on an annual basis.
Uh, Royal Valley Recreation, there's a five thousand there.
Twenty five hundred for Hoyt May.
Yep. Park, fireworks, do we always do something for Hoyt fireworks, is on an annual?
It is an annual.
Okay. There's no law after. Soulful Association. Roydye Mall Association. Second Saturdays. I think we knocked it as out a few.
Correct.
I'm losing, so. Uh, studying with us, Ray Corrigan, nation is a one-time thing. So, then here's, here's a list of the ones that apparently we do every year for our project.
So, it's basically the ball association.
It said that we can knock out the second Saturday because we, we inform the Chamber of Commerce.
So, does it, does it have a total lock?
That was like three thousand dollars, right?
No, it's all.
Oh.
Yeah, it was a ton.
Oh, because you paid that every month?
Yes, a thousand dollar amount.
So, that comes out.
All that came out, and it's on the next page here.
So, really, it's just?
Everything is top. That's the annual appropriations that we're doing at Parks Direct. That's the annual appropriations that we're doing at Parks Direct.
There's still money to come in.
I also got 2,800.
Okay, because...
What's that?
What do you have?
He's just adding one.
I'm just adding ones that we...
He knows...
Should be 16,500 if you include the, uh, the school society, the 1,500.
It should be how much?
16,500.
15,500?
16...
Oh, 16,500. No, I made a mistake, so...
I have in the, in 40, this year, it's 15,000, but if you add in the, the, uh, historical society. Should be... Here it comes. Right, it says third.
Well, I've got 21,3 with the Pride of Hoyt, Historical Society, Circle Bill, Royal Valley, Hoyt Fire Department Fireworks, Nettawaka, Soldier, Whitey. I came up with 21,3.
Now, it's funny, is this report doesn't have some of those on it?
What's that from?
325.
Okay, but see, this is 24, so we have paid some.
Yeah, the ones I added up are all 24s. What we had paid, what we paid out in 24s.
And, and this is what I'm saying. I, that report doesn't do me any good because it's not showing me what we're doing in the past history, what, a list of people that were giving these appropriations.
Well, that's a, this one.
That one, yeah, I, I understand that.
So, this is 25. I mean, I've got 25 here also.
So, you really just want a list that's...
No, I don't want to fumble through all this. I just want to create a, uh...
We don't give it unless they ask. So, we don't have a list.
Right, but we have past history.
Right, and we didn't get Hoyt Fire, anything in 24.
Yeah, we get Hoyt Fire 24, we get Hoyt Fire, $500 for fireworks donation.
It doesn't look like they already gave them to us on here. Who was it made up to?
Uh, Hoyt World Fire Department.
Okay.
Fireworks donation.
It appears we have enough money to go ahead and do the whole ask.
Right, because actually, if you, if you look and if you, you know, think that the other quarters will bring in as much money, like, 21,000 dollars just came in from the first quarter. So, if we did that, every quarter would be 850.
So, it would be, be my recommendation that we give them the 5,500 for the sign. It's a one-time donation.
Right.
But then include them also in the 2,500 for their general fund for their Ball Association.
And then, by Dennison, I would say that we do the 2,500, that's likely we're gonna leave, do everybody else.
Include that.
Yeah.
Maybe we can put together a list of these so that we...
Have it for...
Yeah, it's, it's all in there.
Actually have it at budget time even.
Yeah. It's off here, but it's not, they just haven't asked, so...
Right, right.
Yeah.
This system's not gonna have it until they ask.
So, this, so this is, this is what we have for appropriations.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
So, you'd like to have that for front-end rent so that...
Right.
You don't want...
Sure.
I got it.
So...
Makes sense.
So, do you want to do them under two separate?
I think we'll do individual.
Yeah.
Uh, I move to, uh, give Holden Ball Association 5,500 in a one-time, uh, check for their new sign, and then also include 2,500 for their, um, general fund for the Ball Association. So, I would pump out of Parks Direct alcohol thing.
One second.
Okay, so, probably moving second to, uh, give 5,500 for the new scoreboard. And along with a 2,500 appropriation to Holden Ball Association. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. And then, here's Dennison. You got it, yeah?
Move, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I move that we give, uh, Dennison, uh, Parks and Rec, uh, donation of 2,500 for their park. I said Dennison due, right?
No, Dennison.
It is Dennison, okay.
One second.
Okay, so, probably moving second to give a 2,500 appropriation to Dennison for their park improvements. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. All right. Do you have a copy of the Ball Association? Okay, here it is to Dennison.
Okay, so, what is this? This is the income graph.
So, this report is what I asked for because that's like what, what would be done in the treasurer's office goes to the clerk's office the next day. And so, it's completely up to date on what the grand total revenue is for.
Right, this is different. Is that the same as the...
This is what she gave me today.
Okay, so what else?
And so, I know that in Parks and Recreation, there's $43,000, and I can tell.
I need to go over this.
Yes, yes. But you've got one that is daily, you know what's came in, like, Roden Bridge brought money in or not. And I know by looking at that, that $21,000, Parks and 21,000 to...
The alcohol.
To alcohol, and another 21,000 would have went to County Jail. It would be split three ways. I mean, it, it doesn't break anything down or tell you a whole lot of information, but, but you kind of know, you know how much money is actually in county funds altogether.
So, maybe that's something we, you know, weekly, every Monday, you call them over for.
Right.
And then, I have listed out, there's some other funds that were not on here. So, we also had, you know, Capitol Bridge, this non-report machinery outlay, so...
Right, because those are different funds, you have to run completely separately.
Right, and so, to give you an idea. This is what we add. So, you could go to road stabilization, you could see the fund number, you could see how much started in the beginning and then worked it out. If we can create, I've, for trust records, not create, but utilize this current system that we have, so we're getting all of these, because those are all the things that we have to look at to determine, you know, rock budget, structure, seal.
Did Scott and Christie work on numbers that were made, like, that week? He was, let's see...
I mean, even the 451 account, I, I couldn't tell you. I mean, I don't have a report telling me.
Did she bring me that one today? Did Aaron bring that 451 today, when she brought her reports?
No, that's the same as Texas.
Yeah, when she bring you, just the 100 and the...
That bridge, yeah.
Did she bring the 240?
It's hidden out, because, so... There's a 451 account on 100 dash 400, a 050, a 240.
She just, she just brought the 100.
So, those...
I used to bring all the red ones, so... I printed three, but I can't print that yet.
No, you need to get that printed out.
That would, that would, Christie was...
The lens has been here, so.
Right, since when? I can't.
She went home...
I can print them upstairs.
That's right, because we, right now. Okay, because when we talked last month, we discussed this, and there were some numbers that you had changed, except Scott?
No, they have not done that.
Right, they have done it.
He came in and worked with Marion and stuff, he needed to do with her, and Christie was not there that day.
Because that's what needs to happen is...
Yes.
Is him and Christie need to get together with numbers like what you've got there.
But all of these...
And define them so that they print out on this system.
Right, because the way I understood, Christie said she can go in and pick.
She can, she can.
I don't need, I don't need all, you know, the oil grease amount. I don't need some of those. And I, I definitely don't, you know, need, there's a lot of these numbers on here we don't need. We just need the ones that are dealing with both bridge, both capital outlay, both income expenses, all that.
Right.
We're gonna break the election.
Yeah, well, here's, here's Darren Root, you gonna see that? The letter to the top end.
I...
To the tribe.
Think I've seen it, but I'll go ahead and...
Did he email it to us?
Are you going to come yesterday or back?
Doing it.
Are you going to lunch and coming back?
Uh, we're going on room trip at 1:00. So, you'll have to be there.
We got bills yet?
Nine minutes.
Yeah, we have a few minutes to go back. Yeah, I've...
Gonna take a little break, is that what you want to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, that's, that would be, it's fine.
All right. So, you want to take a break to water, or?
Um, yeah, because we're gonna leave at 1:00, right?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Okay.
Yeah, who don't mind?
No, that's great. We'll be in recess until 1:00.
And then, are you gonna leave back here or out there?
Yeah, what are we trying?
Truck. Let me go. Commissioner Scott, can you? You will fit the truck?
Better take it to the nurse.
All right.